All right, let's call the City of Milton Common Council meeting to order. It's six oh one, six oh one. Tuesday, March seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted on March sixth at hometown Ace Hardware, Milton Pigly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, second.
And the race is on. There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Aunt Larry, of course, is going to be doing the pledge of allegiance until April something. Are there any public comments regarding items which can be affected by the council's actions? I don't see anybody signed in. So we will move on to the meeting dedication. And I am going to dedicate. You guys will be shocked. This meeting. To all the women of the entire world. So just so you know that you have that on your shoulders tonight. It's on behalf of all the women in the world. And I will read the proclamation for Women's History Month. Whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas, American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas, American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation. And whereas, American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas, American women have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas, American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore, I, Anisa Welch, the first woman mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim March as Women's History Month in the City of Milton. And I will sign this proclamation today, March seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. One of the best proclamations ever. Okay, approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a conditional use permit for Good Works Brewing located at two thirty-seven Parkview Drive.
So Good Works Brewing Company has secured a lease with the now vacant retail space at two thirty-seven Parkview Drive, which was formerly occupied by Integrity Martial Arts. Their intention is to do some renovations, some major renovations to the interior of the building, as well as changing the exterior facade of the building by removing some of the larger windows on the front walkway and replacing those with overhead doors that can be opened. And in addition to that, they are looking to add an outdoor seating area in the green space that now exists to the south of that building. Earlier today, the Plan Commission reviewed that site plan and approved the site plan. The last step in the process is for this development to secure a conditional use permit, which would allow for a brewery or brew house in the B three zone district. The Plan Commission held a public hearing earlier today. There was only two individuals who spoke. One was representing Good Works Brewing Company, who was in the audience tonight, as well as the neighbor Bob Rippenberger, who spoke in support of the conditional use permit. And ultimately, the conditional use permit was forwarded on to the council with a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission. So the council's action to cite this evening would be to review the conditional use permit. And staff's recommendation would be to approve the conditional use permit for the use of a brew pub brewery within the B three zone district at two thirty-seven Parkview Drive.
Questions or comments?
I think that this sounds like an excellent opportunity for Goodrich Square.
Anything else for anybody? Is there a motion?
Move for approval of the conditional use permit for the Good Works Brewing.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. All those in favor? Anyone abstaining?
I will abstain.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda. Discussion and possible action regarding a conditional use permit for John Green Motors along Gateway Drive.
So somewhat similar to the last item. John Green Motors is looking to open up a car dealership facility in the Crossroads Business Park on Gateway Drive. This property would be the three point two nine acre parcel owned by the City of Milton that is directly east of the existing Dairy Queen. He intends to develop that site with an eleven thousand three hundred square foot car dealership facility. Because the property is zoned B two, outdoor sales of vehicles is required, a conditional use permit is required for that use to be permitted within that zone district. Additionally, he had a site plan that went before the Plan Commission earlier this evening and was unanimously approved. And the Plan Commission held a public hearing regarding the conditional use permit request. And there was no individuals who spoke at that, at that conditional use permit hearing. And we have not had any feedback here at City Hall or Public Works regarding any comments for or against that conditional use permit. The city administration is in support of this conditional use permit for the car dealership facility to be constructed on the city-owned site. In addition to that, the next item on the agenda will be a TIF development agreement with Four Green Acres LLC, which is the, will be the owning entity of that facility, but we'll address that when we get there. At this time, though, a conditional use permit is at the request for the Gateway property, and staff is in support of it. And the Plan Commission forwarded a favorable recommendation as well.
Questions or comments from the council? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit.
Second.
There's a motion and a second or two. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Number ten.
So this is the aforementioned TIF development agreement that we have negotiated with Mr. John Green, who's present this evening. The TIF development agreement is a very standard and straightforward agreement. In this situation, almost mirrors the Dairy Queen TIF development agreement that this body approved back in two thousand and twenty. The TIF development agreement calls for Mr. Green to construct the car dealership facility and have a minimum property value tax guarantee of no less than one point six five million dollars on the site. In return, the City of Milton has agreed to sell the property to Mr. Green for one dollar in support of his development. As with always, this TIF development agreement will run for ten years. And at any such time that Mr. Green either exceeds the, the projected value, that's a good thing for, for him and for us. In the event that he does not meet that minimum property tax value guarantee, he will be required to make up the difference between the tax property or the taxable, the tax increment generation based off that value and whatever the real value and tax increment created would be for that year.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the TIF eleven development agreement with Four Green Acres LLC.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding. Two.
Resolution.
Oh, there's a resolution. Okay, all right. Discussion and possible action regarding resolution two thousand and twenty-three oh five authorizing the execution of closing documents for the sale of land to Four Green Acres LLC along Gateway Drive.
So as previously, previously mentioned in the TIF development agreement, the City of Milton has agreed to sell the land to Four Green Acres LLC in, in response to the TIF development agreement responsibilities for the City of Milton. As such, resolution two thousand and twenty-three oh five authorizes the city administrator, myself, to execute those closing documents and have worked with Attorney Schrader to begin that closing process.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash zero five.
Second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? That motion carries. You'd think there was like a big football game or basketball game or something, the way you guys are ripping through these discussion and possible action. Regarding a residential developers' agreement for Park Place Investments LLC along Bowers Lake Road.
So this is a little bit different than the two items ago. This is a developers' agreement for Park Place Investments LLC, which is the entity that purchased the former Bonnie Mead Golf Course and is looking to develop that acreage with residential development. Last fall, the City of Milton annexed that land in. Earlier this year, that property was rezoned, or the subject site was rezoned to R four to allow for multifamily development, which was nine two-unit condominium developments, as well as one five-unit townhouse development. And additionally, there will be a clubhouse or event kind of area, as well as an outdoor recreational pickleball court. The site plan for this was reviewed earlier today by the Plan Commission and approved. And the, the residential developers' agreement that is before the council tonight is similar to all other residential developers' agreements that we bring forth for any residential development. So although this is not a plat, this is a site plan, the residential development agreement still stands, which outlines the roles and responsibilities for the developer in terms of public infrastructure and how that will be prepared, constructed, and then ultimately turned over to the City of Milton. In addition, it outlines the parkland dedication requirement for this development. And although they are placing an outdoor recreational facility on the site, we are still requiring a payment in lieu of parkland dedication, as outlined in the residential developers' agreement. So the residential developers' agreement, again, will outline the roles and responsibilities of that developer for public infrastructure and how the city's role will play in the oversight of that development before acceptance of those improvements.
Questions or comments?
I assume the payment is because the pickleball court is a private entity in terms, as opposed to a public facility.
That is correct. Yeah, it's our understanding that the developer's intention is to have that be owned and operated by the homeowners association that will govern that condominium development. And although it's probably going to be a situation where members of the public will certainly utilize that court, that is not his intention. And therefore, we didn't necessarily consider that to be a public recreational improvement. And, and he concurred, so.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Park Place subdivision developers' agreement.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? That motion carries. All right, discussion and possible action regarding a request to install a new private onsite wastewater treatment system at nine thirty-three West High Street, Mark.
The owners at nine thirty-three West High Street have requested a new septic system on their site through Rock County Health Department. Our ordinance requires council approval of this. The, the county also asked to see if public sewers were available, which the nearest sewers are over a thousand feet away. So it would either require a lift station or some other means to provide sewer service to this particular site. Granting the approval by the common council would require the owner to obtain a building permit that the owner complies with the requirements of the State Department of Health, or in this case, that would be the Rock County Health Department. All operation and maintenance is responsibility of the owner. Rock County Health Department may apply additional restrictions, and once public sewer service becomes available, the building sewer shall be connected within ninety days. There is no fiscal impact to the city for this. And if we were to look at installing, installing public utilities for this one particular property, it would be substantial cost to do that. And, and also time consuming. So just looking to see if the council is interested in approving a private onsite wastewater treatment system for nine thirty-three West High Street.
Questions?
I did, Mark. Do we have a lot of situations like this in, in the outer edges of our community, I guess? It's maybe an unfair question.
I don't know what a lot would be, but there are some on the outer edges of the community. As an example, Janesville Street, a couple of years back, we had a situation that, in that case, it was just required an extension of gravity sewer. The existing system was able to be constructed in a way that would allow for the owner to connect. In this case, it would require a lift station or other apartments to be installed.
I have a question that, a question regards comprehensive plan and other stuff that may eventually happen in that area. I, you know, certainly think that this is something that needs to go forward, so I'm not raising that question in regard to voting no on this, but just wondering about that.
That's a, that's a great question. So as my, if my recollection serves me, this part of the community is, is designated as kind of neighborhood residential. Across the street is more of an industrial development, so. Yeah. So in the event that development does occur in this area, so, and what I mean when I say that is some sort of additional development, you know, south of Vincent or along Minogue Road, or even along, you know, Elm Street, that would not, would likely precipitate the city to extend infrastructure to serve that new development, which would then likely bring this property into the, the, the development plan. And as Mark noted, once sanitary sewer is made available, public sanitary sewer is made available, the owner would require to be connected to that facility. So as development may occur in the future, at some point, this property would, would likely fall in line with whatever facilities were required in order to precipitate that development. So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, I guess that's a long answer. The short answer is, is it would not be incongruent with our comprehensive plan to allow this as the designated use and future use would still be congruent with that. That's a medium answer.
Yeah. My, my guess is the, the costs involved put it pretty low on the priority list for that kind of development.
Yeah, yeah, I, I would, I would concur with that. The ability to serve that site, as Mark indicated, would require a lift station, which typically, you know, has a, a large six-figure value to it. Now that's an accessible, you know, cost, but it isn't necessarily something that people are super excited about taking on. If you may recall, many years ago, and I'm talking probably fourteen years ago, there was an attempt to develop property, not, not the property south of this on Vincent, but the property just a little bit further south down John Paul. And it was cost prohibitive for that to be developed. Now that was going to be developed by the City of Janesville. But you can see that that area is somewhat of kind of an island right now. And that's okay.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Second.
Just to add with the contingencies required by ordinance.
All those in favor? Okay, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a possible change order for the West Tower rehabilitation project.
So as part of the large funding package that was discussed at the last meeting, it was determined to use ARPA funds for the West Tower Rehabilitation. This is a no-cost change order. It allows for conformance with the ARPA requirements by adding language into the contract documents for the contractor that are required by ARPA.
Questions?
Make a motion to approve the West Tower Rehabilitation Change Order number one.
Second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding site remediation near the waste oil tank at six twenty West Madison Avenue.
So the waste oil tank was removed late last year. And in addition, there was some additional work near the waste oil tank for some site remediation work that was discovered at the same time. That work was conducted and the testing provided that, or follow-up testing provided there was additional work required by the Department of Natural Resources before we're able to close out the site. This contract with General Engineering is for a total cost of ten thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. It allows for a monitoring well to be installed for groundwater monitoring and soil sampling in the area of the previous site contamination.
Question?
Mark, how long does that well have to be sort of kept in operation? Is that?
It depends on what's found.
Gotcha. That is, the DNR did some of the initial cleanup, correct?
The DNR was onsite over some of it and has been involved with the entire process. We had a, the same contractor, General Engineering. And a contractor that performed the work.
Okay, so they did oversee it, and they would continue to oversee it?
Yes, the, this project also includes a report prepared by General Engineering to provide a status update to the DNR.
Anything else for anyone? Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion that we approve the project plans and administrative cost estimate from General Engineering Company.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action on proposals for police chief recruitment.
So included with the agenda materials were three proposals that we received from three different companies for the police chief recruitment. Those were GovHR, McMahon, and GPS. Then internal group met consisting of the Police Commission President Ken Smith, Mayor Welch, Chief Markwart, and myself, and we reviewed the proposals, and then they also went to the Police Commission to be reviewed as well. The recommendation from the Police Commission at their meeting on February twenty-third is to approve a contract with GovHR. And the contract would be the, the proposal document. There's a signature page in that. And Attorney Schrader reviewed it. He came back. There was one change, and that's part of the revised copy that was sent with the packet as well.
Questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a contract with GovHR.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, discussion and possible action, oh, the motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding ordinance two thousand and twenty-three five oh nine amending title to section twenty-six dash thirty-five of the Code of Ordinances concerning property maintenance requirements.
This request is more of a formality in the way the title of this particular ordinance is written within our ordinances. We ran into a situation where our code enforcement officer, Blaine Larson, needs to issue citations related to this ordinance. And the title of the actual ordinance is applicability, which looks really weird on the citation if we were to actually issue one. So that's where this request is coming from. Simply changes the wording within the title of the ordinance and no functional changes beyond that.
Questions? Is there a motion?
There need to be multiple readings on an amendment?
It's an ordinance, so.
So.
Yes, so you'd have the same motion or motions that you'd have otherwise.
He's so funny.
So we'd be looking for, if the council so wishes, a motion to approve the first reading, waive the second and third, and adopt.
I would move approval of the amendment to ordinance twenty twenty-three five oh nine amending the title to section twenty-six thirty-five of the Code of Ordinances concerning property maintenance requirements. And approve the first reading, waive the second and third, and adopt.
Nice work, you guys. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding committee and commission appointments.
I'm excited that we have people that are, are out there looking for the openings that we have on our committees. And it looks like we're getting a lot of new people, and that's just great.
So we have two people that have expressed interest in being appointed to, to two different commissions. So for the Historic Preservation Commission, that's Amy Ochsner, and Parks and Recreation Commission, Rachel Renhack. And so the mayor has reviewed the questionnaires and recommended that these be appointed. Is there a motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Congratulations to, congratulations to our new appointees. All right, general items. Jenny said I could read this at general items. Okay, this is, um. This is a, this is from all of you. So sit up. And Mark Langer from Public Works. Oh, and it is to, it's to KB Sharpening, thanking them for their generous donation of sharpening services to the City of Milton for the two thousand and twenty-two calendar year. These services go a long way towards not only reducing the tax burden on area residents, but also provide a service to our staff parks and green spaces that benefit all who travel to and through Milton. On behalf of all the city's staff, the mayor, the Milton Common Council, we want to sincerely thank you for your generous donation. All right.
Yeah, I believe it's been at least since as long as I've been here, which is nine years. We actually recognized them at the Community Recognition Picnic, I think, two summers ago for their service. And, and it really is a really gracious gesture from them to do that. Sharpening doesn't sound like a big deal, but you know, it takes specialized equipment and specialized skills. And we have a lot of lawnmower blades, and we go through them quite a bit. And there's quite a number of other items too that they're able to. Uh, assist us with, so it's, 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 uh, it's been a long time, and it's really, we're fortunate to have that.
If you don't mind.
We do, we do mind Larry, but alright. Alright, is there anybody else that wants a, a really poorly worded dad joke before? It's not on the agenda, I'm just gonna get myself in all sorts of trouble, I, I apologize ahead of time. Or ask for forgiveness, I don't know what it is, um. General items. Now is the time where you can have a bad dad joke. No general items, committee reports? Oh my gosh. Staff reports? Okay, I was gonna be like, what?
So, this is a Mark question. As part of the ordinance revision that I just talked about, there was also a forfeiture um, recommendation from the judge. That I think needs a vote on by the council, is that? I apologize for not catching that. Any sooner, there's a memo in there with Judge Caffler's recommended forfeiture.
Are they different than what they were before?
I don't think we had an established forfeiture schedule for this violation.
Oh, gotcha.
But don't know if I'm out of order by bringing that up now, if that should come in the future, or.
Did you want to turn your mic on, or are you just pondering?
Yeah. I better turn my mic on, yeah. Um, yeah, the, I, I know what's being referenced, it's the, to amend these, the uh, bond schedule, I guess, to. To, for this particular citation. And uh, the, the only thing I'm just thinking about is in terms of how, how well it's noticed, right now, it just, no, no, it's. Uh, yeah, it's, it doesn't notice anything about the um. Bond schedule, and so. I think uh, I, I know what the chief is, is referencing, he's got, I saw it in the, in the packet here, but. I think it would be best if we just specifically noticed that for the next meeting, and then it could be addressed, and I'm sure passed at the next one. Sure.
Thanks, anything else from any other staff? So you can't just refuse, do I have to call on you? Alright, Ashley, I know there's stuff happening at the library.
Always, um, our baby chicks will be at the library until Friday, so if you haven't come to see them, please do, um, our live, I'm watching livestream right now too, so we have a livestream. Um, our book sale is going on throughout the whole month of March, and the school digital art show is starting on Tuesday. So we have all the art.
And is there some sort of bidding war going on?
Well, yeah, our Valen Public Library Foundation is holding an online auction. Um, the link is available on our website and our Facebook page, and um, tons of great stuff donated by local businesses. Items made by community members, so support the foundation, which supports the library.
Bit high enough. Jenny, anything?
Just getting ready for the election on April fourth, so absentee ballots are expected to be going out by next Tuesday, we haven't received them yet, so. Sometime soon, um, and then in-person absentee voting begins Tuesday, March twenty-first. And on another area, we are having alcohol licensing renewals are going to be coming up soon. Uh, so with that, we are having alcohol licensing discussion where we invited Jason Lee from the Wisconsin Department of Revenue. To come and have an informal discussion, uh, this year we are going to have town of Fulton, town of Milton, town of Harmony, town of Janesville, and then uh, any other. Municipalities that would like to participate, those other municipalities have been formally invited so far. To have either their businesses or board members come and listen to the information, again, it's, it's informal. Where they're able to ask, ask questions and get responses, so um, this is, would be the third year we'd be doing this type of discussion. May fourth. That's gonna be at five thirty. Yes.
Is your microphone on?
Yes, yes, that is open to the public, so we'll, we'll be noticing it um, on our Facebook and website. Just anyone who is interested, so it's everything from uh, how do you get your operator's license, if people have questions about that, to. Uh, what kind of events are allowed to have alcohol licenses and what kind of businesses, so. Um, all of our municipalities are having the same questions, so we'd like to hear from everyone to have that kind of discussion, it seems to be pretty, pretty helpful. Um, to bring it, bring it to the forefront.
Is that something that the chamber should be?
The chamber, yep, the chamber is, is invited to it, uh, we have had somebody from the chamber the last two years attend.
Mark Langer.
Um, just kind of in between snow and grass, so.
And snow.
And more snow, yeah, there's a chance of snow end of the week, but really just normal, but there's some. Um, another chance of a fairly decent storm coming here end of the week, and hopefully. People are able to get through and green grass is coming.
Just want to commend you on your, your skills on forecasting, they're really getting to be refined, and I, I feel like that's. Ongoing improvement there, so. We can probably kick you off that performance improvement plan now. Kelsey, all things money?
Yes, we actually have the auditors here this week, so today was day two, and they'll be here tomorrow. To finalize everything for the two thousand twenty-two financials, so everything's going well so far, and they're really fun.
Yes, they are. Well.
As of right now, at our next council meeting on March twenty-first, we will have a, a presentation by Vandewell and Associates, who has put together a scope of services to. Uh, begin the process of rewriting our zoning subdivision and land division ordinances. Uh, so that will be exciting to hear their presentation. Um, if the common council likes their presentation, uh, we will bring forth a contract to begin that process. And as we've discussed in the past, that will likely be a very lengthy process, uh, eighteen months to two years, but it's very thorough. And they have a lot of experience, obviously, in Milton, as the authors of our comprehensive plan. And uh, have written the zoning ordinances for many of our neighbors, so look forward to that presentation. And then uh, Mark looks forward to reading all the changes.
He'll pre, he'll present on each ordinance one, a council meeting until the end of time.
He, Mark, Mark Langer will, will be one busy beaver.
I was gonna say something, and I just lost my whole train of thought, oh, I know what I was gonna say, like, our ordinances are so old. That I was not even born yet, when they were, right? That's how old they are. It's old, I heard that. Were you gonna say that? Not that old. Cause we're just a fun group tonight, alright. And he probably was already reading. Alright, our next party.
Welcome to Milton.
We like to have fun at these meetings, so we can get through them. Our next party or meeting date is March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. And it will be the last meeting for, no, is there one more for Larry?
One more, two more actually. Well, technically, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, alright, okay, I won't kick you out yet, sorry, I already got you out the door. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Anyone oppose? Alright, good job, everybody, less than an hour.